Okay, folks, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Would you kindly stand to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, I'd like to welcome Amanda Zempetti, a new member of the Board of Selectmen who was just elected in the town election on Saturday. So we welcome Amanda and look forward to working with her.[53.12][53.12](APPLAUSE). Secondly, I have a couple of announcements. One, from the town clerk, early voting for the November presidential election will begin on October 19th to November 1st. Early voting will be on Saturday, October 19th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, October 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The ballots will be mailed out to everybody who had requested them around the 1st of October. So with that, just be mindful of those dates. Secondly, the Abingdon High School Boosters is conducting their yearly door-to-door drive on October 20th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., where they go along and ask for donations for the booster program. Additionally, we have the 71st Annual Trittown Veterans Day Parade will be here in Abington. As you know, the parade is for Abington, Rockland, and Whitman. It'll step off at 10:00 a.m., beginning at the Beaver Brook School and go down through Adams Street to North Abington Center. Additionally, I would like to, and I'm trying to scour the room to see if I see them, there was two eight-year-olds, actually, for their birthday. Their mother, Will, and Caroline Felder, is it?
Fielding.
Fielding, I'm sorry. Fielding, I'm sorry. Fielder. Their mother and father were involved in a lot of charity work, and they brought the kids up thinking that same thing. The children decided, oh, there they are there. They said for their birthday, they wanted, rather than presents, they would like to accept donations of food so they could drop it off at the senior center, for the senior center grocery department. So we wanna give recognition to Will and Caroline and thank them very much for their generosity.[178.95][178.95](APPLAUSE). That's something you don't, in this day and age, you don't see. And for the children to say they don't want birthday presents and instead wanted to give back to the community is a testament certainly to their parents as well. So we thank you on behalf of the town, you know, and congratulate you and wish you a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Let us see. So today, we have with us, I'm gonna jump down to Nancy Reed, if I could. Nancy had submitted, where is Nancy? If you wanna hop right up here, Nancy? Nancy had submitted a letter to me, Dear Board Members, after serving on the Abingdon Summer Concerts Committee for 25 years, I would like to inform you of my decision to retire from the committee at the end of fiscal year 2025. It has been quite a journey and a rewarding one, but I believe it is time for someone else to chair the committee in the years ahead. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve the town in this capacity. At this time, I would like, I would also like to request the board consider appointing a five-person summer concerts committee. There are currently four members, which make it difficult when voting to get a majority. It would also help the committee's financial secretary when trying to get the necessary signatures on vouchers. Thank you sincerely, Nancy Reed, who is, I don't know where to begin, actually. Nancy has been a volunteer in the community for as long as I can remember, specifically in the music end of things, back when your son played in the band many years ago. And, you know, your contributions for the town have been over and above, and certainly from the, it morphed into clearly the summer concerts. So I wanna give you the opportunity to say something first, and then we can...
Will, I have a book here I'd like to read.[301.45][301.45](LAUGHING). But first of all, I gave the schedule to the board members because this is what we have to have now, because we've become so popular, we have lots of sponsors and donors. And on the back this year, because it was our 20th year, we put a little history for those that maybe don't know. And I just wanted to show you, this was the first year in 2005.
Oh, wow.
And then in 2013, we went to this format. We had several donors and sponsors. So I just wanted to say that it's such a pleasure, and I'm so proud of how we were supported and how we've grown. And one of the things that I wrote down for a memory was the fact that when people come to our concerts, they leave saying, wow, this is the best venue, and Abington must be rich. But I said, well, our sponsors are very generous, but we're not a rich town, but I'm glad you enjoy it. And then the musicians also love our bandstand, because it's not a fancy schmancy gazebo. It's very simple. There are no stairs, there are no railings, and it holds 65 people, because it was built for the Abington Community Band to be able to have a place to play way back when. So that's a little bit of the history. And when our committee was appointed, it started out with just me and Dr. Peter McDonald, who had been on the building committee for the bandstand. So basically, we were simple, and I did some of the planning, and Peter would come on Sundays and do what was needed. Now, a few years later, I was afraid of handling all the money and everything, so I asked the selectmen if they would form a committee and also let the town take care of the money. I had read an article about somebody in some other state or town that was in Little League, and the mother or the person in charge of the money absconded with it. And I'm thinking, oh, boy, they're gonna be pointing fingers at me. So I said, I don't wanna do that anymore. So then the selectmen gave us three members and a member from the board that would be a liaison, but also serve on the committee. In recent years, we didn't do that, although Kenny Coyle volunteered when he was a selectman. So things have grown, but it's hard when you're trying to decide on a band or what to do when you have four people that are voting, and five would be much better, thank you very much. So in the early days, I used to pray for 300 people to come, you know, make it worthwhile. Well, in the last few years, we've had an average of 600 or 700 people, and many times we've had over 1,200. One time, we even had over 1,500. So I think we're, I think we're a success. But a lot of that success is also due to all the support that we got from the town, all the departments. They supported us and came through if we had a problem. So it's, that's what Abington does. We all try to help each other out, so that's why I've lived here all my life, and I won't say how many years. And so I wanted to thank all those departments, and as well as the opportunity to be able to speak to you tonight and just give you an update of how far we've come, and I hope we continue this last year. One of the reasons why I decided to resign or retire, or whatever the word is, from this position is because it was, it had the most challenges in all the 20 years. The weather was one of them. Another was the fact that we had to pay for a shuttle service, because people had gotten used to it. A lot of people can't walk from the furthest parking lot at the high school, so we felt we needed to keep up that tradition that we started when they were built in the new school. We usually used a town van that was handicap accessible, but it was unavailable this year because it's on its last legs, so we paid. So basically, there was an extra $4,000 that we didn't plan for, but because of all the support we've gotten over the years, we're gonna be fine next year, too. So I don't know who's gonna take my place. Maybe you wanna appoint somebody, maybe somebody wants to volunteer, and anybody that's interested in being on the committee, the selectmen handle that, because the committee is appointed by the selectmen. So I think that's about all I was gonna say. I mean, I had a lot more, but I won't.[643.12][643.12](LAUGHING). But anyway, if there, do you have any questions?
No, why don't you just stay right there for a minute, though? Because I got something I wanna read, pardon me, wanna read for you.
Oh.
When it comes to music, Nancy Reed is an Abington icon, even though she never played an instrument or sang in a choir. Nancy was a band parent from 1977 to 1984, when her sons Ken and Jim were in the Abingdon High School Band under the direction of Mr. Paul K. Smith, Sr. She was a chaperone on most of the band trips. Nancy was also a member of the Abington Music Parents and continued as a band aide even after her sons had graduated. Over the course of many years, Nancy organized concerts held at the United Church of Christ in Abington, the Abingdon Public Library, the VFW, which included, for example, a jazz cabaret with the Ken Reed Jazz Quintet and Kenny Hadley Big Band and the Adi Shaw Orchestra. Nancy applied for grants with the Abingdon Cultural Council and others to help support these music programs. In 1977, excuse me, in 1997, the Abingdon Community Band was formed under the direction of then-teachers Ms. Joyce Harrington and Mr. Michael Smith. The band would hold concerts outside in front of the old high school. It was a couple of years after these outdoor concerts began that Nancy spoke with Dr. Peter McDonald, a trumpet player in the band, and someone she had met earlier that year working on a house tour. She had an idea about building a proper bandstand as a place for the Abington Community Band to perform. Nancy then formed a planning committee with Dr. Peter and several others. They would meet at the town hall to discuss the bandstand and where it could be built. Island Grove and Woodsdale School were both considered until Nancy heard that a track and field were to be built next to the library. Nancy inquired about the land below the track. She got the town to designate the land for a bandstand. For the next two years, Nancy and committee members, Marion Hadley, visited many bandstands on the north and south shores in Cape Cod for ideas. Finally, an architect was hired to design the bandstand. Once the design was completed, the planning committee had to find a way to pay for it. Nancy started a fundraising campaign, and donations, large and small, began to come in. Nancy accepted a very large donation from the Nisby family, and that is why the bandstand was named the Catherine and Joseph Nisby Bandstand. Nancy formed the Abingdon Summer Concerts Committee. It would be a town committee whose members would be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. The formal dedication of the Millennium Memorial Complex where the Catherine and Joseph Nisby Bandstand is located was held on Sunday, May 15th, 2005, and was the first time the Abingdon Community Band performed in their new home. There was additional music during the day, and rounding out the celebration was music by The Infractions, the first popular group to perform a live outdoor concert at the bandstand. The rest of the summer of 2005 would see an additional six concerts. In the beginning, Nancy was happy with 200 or 300 people in attendance. Now, the summer attendance can range from 500 to over 1,000 people. The last concert of 2023 had an attendance over 1,500, the largest ever in 20 summers of music. The legacy that Nancy has created to the town of Abington in the form of the gift of music is incredible. Many groups who have performed over the years have requested to return. There are bands such as Studio Two, The Beatles Tribute, that are so popular with attendees that they have been booked on the spot for the next summer. For these and many countless reasons, the Abingdon Board of Selectmen hereby awards you Abington's Best this 23rd day of September.
Well, thank you.[881.12][881.12](APPLAUSE). You're not supposed to do that.
And if I could ask Representative Sullivan Almeida, she'll like to come forward as well.
Congratulations.
Again.[892.73][892.73](LAUGHING). Good to see you.
Great to see you.
I'm in better shape this time.
You're always in great shape, you know?
Thank you.
But...
Shape up, man.[904.91][904.91](LAUGHING).
Okay, thanks. I wanna say congratulations. This is definitely well-deserved. You talk about someone coming in and filling the slot. I don't think the slot level will be filled, but you left a really, really big slot to fill.
Somebody's gotta do it.
Someone, and someone will, but they've learned from someone like you, and that's very important for our town. If you look around, I mean, a lot of these people are here because of you and for you.
I appreciate it.
I get to enjoy the summer concerts sometimes from my house, because I have a, you know, one-year-old who gets to sleep, you know, so early in the evenings, but we get to hear it, and it's because of people like you. And our town is the town we are because of people like you.
Thank you.
This award that you receive tonight is very much earned from your years and years of volunteering. Everyone knows what you do around, you know, winter with Santa. We know, you always show up, you know? We'll keep the secrets going, but I do have a...
And I don't have to wear a wig now either.
Right, you know? You look great.
Thank you.
You look great doing it, and so many families come out because of you and others like you, that it really has a team here, and we are so grateful, myself included. I do have a citation here from the State House. Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers sincere congratulations to Nancy Reed in recognition of you receiving the 2024 Abington's Best Award for your over 20 years of service volunteering at the Abington Summer Concerts and all the town's special events. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all your endeavors. Given this 23rd day of September of 2024, signed by the Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, and offered by your state representative, myself, Alison Sullivan Almeida.
Thank you, Alison.
So congratulations and thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you.[1018.73][1018.73](APPLAUSE). This was totally unexpected, and I appreciate it so much that you people cared enough to come out on this yucky night.[1056.83][1056.83](LAUGHING) It was very nice, I appreciate it. You know, there's...
We love you. We love you, love.
Thank you.[1064.32][1064.32](LAUGHING). What was I gonna say? Oh, yeah, so there's a, I have a whole folder full of reasons why music is important in our lives. Just imagine your whole life without any music. There's, if you're listening to the TV, you'll notice every cartoon, every commercial, everything has music in the background or someplace. And I, like I said, my folder is full of reasons why music is important in your life and reasons why it should always be in the schools, but they keep dropping it because they say it's not important. So other than that, one of the ones that always sticks in my mind that everybody knows, music speaks when words cannot. So I won't say anymore, and thank you.[1127.16][1127.16](LAUGHING).[1128.16][1128.16](APPLAUSE). And if anybody wants to make a donation, you just have to mail it right here.
You sound like a minister now.
Yeah, just mail it to the town hall and put "Summer Concerts" on your check. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, Nancy.[1146.16][1146.16](APPLAUSE). Okay. The hour, 6 o'clock, having arrived, we have a continued hearing on the request for a commercial garage license for the Tire Tech Repair LLC, 201 North Quincy Street. Roberta De Sapp's manager is Mr. De Sapp's president. Mr. Yes, come right up here, please. You have an application before us for 201 North Quincy Street for tire tech repair. Could you explain, I guess, what you've got, what your intent is?
My intent is to just have a shed install and be able to fix tires, use tires.
Okay. I went up, I visited the site, and I gotta be honest with you, I don't know, is there, who is... Bear with me for one second. Who is Bill De Sapp?
I'm yes.
You're that?
Yes.
Do you have anything to do with this business?
No, she's renting the, she wanted to, she been wanting to do it.
Could you just talk about mine?
She been wanting to do it, so what I did with the owner, we opened up the fence. The fence was close to the back exit wall, so we opened up the fence enough where she able to put the sheds there.
Okay, are you two related?
Yes, we are.
What's your relation?
Sister.
Okay. Are you, have anything to do with this property?
No, well, yes, from the landlord, where we have a lease to own.
Do you have anything to do with the business that's up there now?
Yes, I'm the owner of the business.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got a couple of problems.
He's, the owner's aware of it. He's okay to...
Rule still, correct?
Yes.
I have a couple of problems with it. One, the police chief has opined on this matter, and their recommendation is not to approve it. I can read it into the record, but I will, if necessary, I will. I have issues with the fact up there, there is a huge amount of vehicles there, and I mean a huge amount.
Okay.
And I think that that has to be brought into compliance first before we give any more indications of additional businesses up there. I think that the building commissioner is working on it, and I want to ensure that we've gotta figure out what is there, because there is an inordinate amount of vehicles on that location.
In the front, do I would be in the front or in the back?
On front and back inside.
Well, on my property, the vehicle that's on the big lot, I have nothing to do with it. That's the owner that rented out to guys in the back and stuff like that. That's out of my control, because I'm not the owner. So that's the owner of the property. But as far as my, my section where I sell cars to, where I had 12, I think 12 or 13, and four years ago, I asked to approve it for them, which they did. They give me the license, so the amount I have now is in my control. Anything else, the owner rents spots to guys in the back, the front, where I have no say on the property, you know, what to do.
Okay, here's the deal. I think that the amount of vehicles on that property is inordinate. Secondly, I think because you have a connection with this business, and if you would like to go further, I will, but I think unless and until your matter is adjudicated, I don't think we should be approving a license on that property for anything that you have connections with. So if you want, I'd be happy to go further, but I think you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, but at this point, you know, everything's going to court, where she has nothing to do with it. If she needs to get a lease directly from the owner, she, the owner will be glad to do that.
Yeah, I think the U.S. Attorney may have a different read on this whole thing.
So, sorry, can I, is it okay if I, just so I, because I'm trying to play catch-up here? Both of you are renting, so you're renting from the owner and she's renting from you?
Yeah, that's, but the owner's aware of it if...
I understand that, so is it, but yeah, so I'm just trying to understand the hierarchy here.
Yes, yes.
So the person who owns the property, you sir rent from, and then she rents from you?
Yes.
She would like to build a commercial garage and also apply for the license?
Yes.
So we have a structure to be built and a license as well on a sublease of a commercial space?
Yes, which all that was ran by...
I understand that, yeah, the owner should be aware, as you're the one leasing from him. I understand that part of it. I was trying to understand the paperwork trail, so to speak. Sorry, as I'm trying, I was not at the last hearing, so thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for them?
Well, one of the things I see on the building commissioners' synopsis he gives on the licenses, they need site plan review with the planning board.
Well, that was the other thing, too. I think because he's opining that because you wanna put a structure up there, you need to get to the planning board. So I think that there are several factors that need to be worked out before, in my opinion, this board, you know, can look on it favorably.
Okay.
It's your own situation. Secondly, the fact that it's gonna go to the planning board. And thirdly, we have to deal with the number of vehicles that are up there, whether it's yours or somebody else's. There's just a spillover effect that has to be dealt with. So I think from that point, this is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that would like to opine on this? If not, is the board have any more questions for them?
I think we need to bring the owner in of the property. If we've got multiple businesses on the property and...
Well, that's what I think it's gonna be.
And I'll give him, I'll give them the benefit of the doubt that what he's telling us about the cars is true, but, so we have a big, we have multiple tenants up there. No one's responsible for this, that, or the other, so we need to bring the owner in.
And the, I mean, the owner should be responsible to be presented to the planning board anyways, right?
Right.
It should not be the leases.
So is there a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion, we close the hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the hearing is closed. Question now comes on granting the license. What is the pleasure of the board? The chair on his own motion will make a motion to deny.
I'll second it. I'll third it.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
No.
If not, all those in favor to deny kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. Once you get all that worked out, you can resubmit, but I think there's still a long way to go, so.
All right. So as far as like, because I have an attorney on this, as far as my situation, can you explain to me how's that played on there? That way I can be, like, let my attorney knows about it.
Yeah, you'll have to talk to your attorney, and he can talk to the police chief.
So that's the reason they deny it?
The reason to deny it is what I said, there was several reasons. One, the fact that you've gotta go to the planning board, the fact that there are too many vehicles on the property, the fact that you have a relationship on the business.
My business or the...
The sublease of him, so he's involved in it.
So if I were to get a lease directly from the landlord without making a difference as part...
No, no, we still have a lot...
You'd still have to go through all the steps.
We still have to go through all the steps.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's a lot up there that needs to be cleaned up. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, a meeting with Adam Gunn, the Veteran Service Officer, and Eugene Blanchard, President of Hillside Cemetery Association. Gene, come on up. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Adam?
Thank you. I put some information together which I suggest...
Thank you.
You don't look at it.
Do we get to follow along at least?
Put it forward so we have the people at the two short stands. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Gene Blanchard. I'm, I was born and raised in Abington. I haven't lived here for some time now. I am president of the Hillside Cemetery Association. Hillside is a cemetery on Route 139, just before you get to the Waymouth Line. It was formed by a group of neighbors and interested citizens in 1828, when 23 individuals who are neighbors in the west Abington area purchased for the grand sum of $35, three-quarters of an acre, from a local businessman, Thomas Remington, Jr., and laid out a cemetery. The deed says that the land was prepared for a burial ground. It was formed by a group of neighbors and interested citizens in, uh, eighteen twenty-eight, uh, when twenty-three individuals who are neighbors in the West Abington area purchased for the grand sum of thirty-five dollars, three-quarters of an acre, from a local businessman, Thomas Remington, Jr., and laid out a cemetery. The deed says that the land was prepared for a burial ground, which I take it to mean that they had already laid out the cemetery and, and purchased the land in, in connection with that process. In fact, there are graves there that predate eighteen twenty-eight. The oldest grave is one Captain Cornelius Dunham, who was a Revolutionary War soldier, uh, and his grave is as early as seventeen ninety-six. So it's likely that there was a Dunham, uh, burial ground there, which was then incorporated into Hillside. Uh, it, documents on file at the Dyer Memorial Library also indicate that graves, uh, one set of graves that was owned by the Cobb family, just north of Cleveland's Pond, was moved to Hillside after Hillside was, uh, formed. The layout is, um, there are three aisles. There are about nine hundred and thirty grave sites there, all separated by little granite blocks on the corner of each lot, numbered blocks. Records of who's buried there and who owns the graves are incomplete, but we have a lot of information about various families, uh, from the area whose, whose relatives were buried there. In fact, my grandparents on both sides of the family were buried there, and my father and mother were buried there. Uh, there are, there's very little, uh, opportunity for additional grave sites. There are a couple of lots that appear to be unsold and unused. There's some indication that, uh, there might be additional burials, but not very many. There are at least thirty veterans buried there. They are veterans from the Revolutionary War, the Spanish-American War, World War I, World War II, and Korea at least. Uh, that the, uh, apparently, according to information at the Dyer Library, the cemetery fell into disuse sometime in the mid eighteen hundreds, and then in around nineteen hundred, a local group got together and took on the responsibility of maintaining the cemetery. And that group has continued to, to this day. We have secretarial records dating from December twenty-nine, nineteen oh eight, uh, to date. Initially, the group, an unincorporated association, would hold, uh, bake sales and the like to raise money to maintain the cemetery. In recent years, in at least the last fifty years, money has been obtained by requesting donations from people whose families, uh, have been buried there. And as you can imagine, with an old cemetery, the number of donors continuously decreases as people die off and move away, and interest in the cemetery wanes because it's no longer a central part of the life of West Abington. Uh, West Abington used to be a more cohesive, uh, neighborhood, even in my memory. It focused around the former Methodist Church at Thicket and Randolph Streets. It included the West Abington Improvement Association Building on, on Chestnut Street with its related ball field and, and, uh, kids' activities. But all of that has kind of drifted away. However, the cemetery initially was a community operation. As I mentioned, the twenty-three individuals who, uh, banded together to buy the cemetery and set it up. It was also a central part of the town's Memorial Day celebrations up until recent years. I remember when veterans organizations would assemble in the Methodist Church parking lot, would march down to the cemetery, there'd be a service, blowing of taps, a volley of gunfire, a speech, a hymn would be sung. Everyone would then repair back to the Methodist Church where they'd have breakfast together and then go on to Island Grove and to Mount Vernon and, and subsequent ceremonies. So the cemetery has in the past been, uh, an important component to the town's observance of Memorial Day. That seemed to have terminated around the time of COVID. The church had been sold, the number of veterans in town had seriously decreased, and the ceremonies for around Memorial Day, uh, were far less extensive than they had been in the mid-twentieth century. As I mentioned, the money to maintain the cemetery, which is mostly mowing the lawn in the summertime, picking up branches in the spring after the winter, uh, has been funded mostly by, uh, requests for donations from a dwindling number of donors. In addition, there's a hundred, um, I want to get the figure right, eighteen hundred and eighty-three dollars, which in the past has been given to the town treasurer as perpetual care funds. And of course, as years has gone off, the amount of interest that that's generated has severely decreased. But periodically, the town treasurer pays over on request to the association, the accumulated interest on those funds. So the town has a small financial interest in the ongoing nature of the maintenance of the cemetery.
Gene, if I could?
Yeah.
Just a couple of questions.
Sure.
From a formal stand, from a legal standpoint, do you hold a deed to the property other than, or has it just been loosely construed over the years?
We have nothing, as it turns out. Fifty years ago, nobody seemed to know who owned the cemetery. I ended up doing a lot of research at the Registry of Deeds and located this deed. So twenty-three people obtained title to it. Those twenty-three people and their descendants, probably, there's probably thousands of people now.
Right.
Uh, I don't think they ever intended to have an ownership interest in the sense of controlling it or doing anything from a legal angle with it. They, they must have regarded it as a community, uh, project. Throw a little money together, raise some funds, buy the land.
Yeah, and generally in New England, that's what you find. I mean, when I was in Kingston, the, the church and the town were one, and we had a problem with the town green, that there was nothing, no documentation. So that's the reason I asked. And, um, as, as it relates to the individual graves, were those sold with, to your knowledge, were, were the individual graves sold with a deed to the family?
Um, the original layout, which encompassed sixty-eight lots, I have no idea.
Okay.
How they were sold, conveyed, I don't know. In nineteen seventy-one, because there was so little land left, uh, the central lot, the center aisle was filled in to create another eleven, uh, plots. And those, uh, those have been sold to people. So there are people, including my family, that own lots granted by the association whose right to sell lots is...
Ambiguous.
Ambiguous at best, yes.
All right. I think that there's two, uh, particular statutes that would allow the town to go, move forward with it, both of which would require a town meeting vote. Um, my, the favorable thing as far as I'm concerned is the fact that there are thirty veterans buried there that date back to the Revolutionary War. So I think the town has a, in my opinion, a superintendency, custodianship, that we should be looking after the veterans as it relates to that. I think the question in my mind would be, um, to enact either provision of law would, number one, require a town meeting vote. So any vote the board would take would be to further, in furtherance of the process. If we were, if we were to vote in favor, it would be to put an article on for town meeting. Uh, if town meeting were to vote in favor, and, and one particular statute would be to petition the Supreme Judicial Court to basically deed the remaining rights over to the town because of, for whatever reason, those, those ancestors are nowhere to be found. The petition could be, I'm sure, worded in such a way that those who are living and have proof of a deed, you know, would still maintain ownership. I think that's from the legal standpoint. So I guess the first question comes, and, and I'm sympathetic to your cause, I know we've talked about this many years ago when I was on the board, and, and, and you rightfully point out, the, the custodians of them now are advancing in age, and I think it's incumbent upon the town to look at it, and especially in light of the fact, I go back to, that there are veterans dating back to the revolution and all wars subsequent to. Um, so I think the first point would be, if the selectmen were to approve it, to, uh, move it forward to town meeting, and then there would be, the, the finance committee would review the intricacies of it, we would have a chance to have the attorneys look at it, and so any vote we would take, assuming tonight, would be to begin the process. And I, I think it's, it's gonna be, as all things end up being, will probably be a little bit of a lengthy process, but I think, um, quite frankly, now's the time to begin it, in my opinion.
I'll make that as a motion, so we can move this forward to, through that process to town meeting. We need to step up with...
Yeah, I, I think we do.
Not only for the people that have passed it here, but of course for our veterans, so, but more far.
Is there any other questions from the board on this matter?
Um, so the motion, I'm sure there's other towns and municipalities that we can look at that have done exactly this, but the motion would be to start exploring the possibility of acquiring Hillside Cemetery in a warrant at the town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
So motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, unanimous. So we'll begin the process, any...
Thank you.
And I was on the board years ago, and we used to start Memorial Day there.
We'd go deep in the cemetery and get bit by mosquitoes.
I was gonna say mosquitoes.
Wake up all the mosquitoes.
My brother's here with me tonight, and at least one year, he played taps when he was in high school.
And your sister's here too, I believe.
Uh, I, I'd just like to add something if I could. I, I'm entirely in agreement. I think further discussion has to be taken because there are a couple of different ways this could go.
Right, yeah, yeah.
The town could, for instance, uh, provide for a board of cemetery commissioners who would be in charge. The statute also says that in the absence of cemetery commissioners, the, the board of selectmen can take on that job.
Right.
It may be that you wouldn't feel that, that this was a big enough project to warrant having a whole different board on top of it.
Mm-huh.
And there's a statute that says that the town can take over and abandon cemetery. It doesn't have to own it, but it may make sense to own it.
Right.
So I think those are the issues that somehow or other have to be hashed out.
Yeah, we have a lot, we have a lot to flush out, but I think we, we'll begin the process.
And I'd be happy to work, of course, with anybody to help flush that out.
Very good, well, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Bob Manning, Abington Celebrates Oktoberfest Weekend Update. You're standing in for Sheldon, Kenny, and now Bob.
I'm still a trustee of the, of the group. Bob Manning, uh, Abington Celebrates, uh, we're here to announce our eighth annual Oktoberfest, coming up October fourth, fifth, and sixth, which is shortly coming in two weeks. Friday night, we're having a trivia at the, uh, American Legion Post at, uh, one, one oh-two Washington Street. It's twenty-five dollars a person, up tables are up to eight. There's gonna be, uh, raffles, a cash bar, and a donation dessert table available to the participants. Saturday, we have a busy day. We start off with our Oktoberfest Marketplace, which is a very, very popular place. You can come down and buy a whole bunch of stuff from a whole lot of people, vendors. Uh, that's gonna run from nine AM to two PM. Um, that's sponsored by the Abington United Church of Christ. The Island Grove Walking Tour from eleven to twelve, uh, which will meet at the, um, Lake Street, uh, Bridge, right, the, by the memorial, and tour the entire park and give the history of the park, which is a very nice, if you don't know much about the town, it's a pretty good tour to take on the town to learn what's going on there. But a lot more happens there that day too, so. Um, the Dyer Memorial Library is gonna be, have an open house, uh, from twelve-thirty to three, hosted by the Dyer Library. That's a, uh, if you don't know it, this town, every property of this town should pick a time to go to the Dyer Library. There is so much stuff about this town in that library and, and all two floors. I just, I've been in there probably thirty times, and I haven't even touched or scratched the history of this town. It's just amazing what you can learn in that place. We're also having Not So Scary Woods for the children from three to six, sponsored by the Abington Lions Club. It's a free event. Uh, we also have the Taylor Cormier Sings Sinatra from four to six at the, uh, high school. Uh, that's being sponsored by the Rotary Club. There are tickets available for twenty-five dollars. And then we have the Pumpkin Point Treasure Walk and Movie Night from six to eight PM, sponsored by the Abington Celebrates teams, Park and Rec. Uh, Island Grove Park is at Two Hundred Park Avenue. It's a great time for the kids. Uh, there's gonna be a couple of touch-the-trucks down there and movies, and a walk by a pirate. And I might as say anything more, except there's other surprises to happen, and the children should have a great time. Then we get to our big day, which is Sunday, the sixth of October. Um, this is a great third annual Freaky Flea Market. It's gonna be from nine to three. It's sponsored by Blackbeard Incorporated. Uh, it's gonna be a great day to come down and, and look and, and purchase things for, for whatever you want to do for the holidays. Uh, we have the Oktoberfest Family Celebration from twelve to three. That's sponsored by the Abington Celebrates itself, uh, at the Folio School in Memorial Field. So we're gonna be up and down, we're gonna have activities in both fields all day long for adults and children. We also have the Double Eagle Oktoberfest German Band playing from one to three, if you ever wanted to hear Opa Band, that's an Opa Band.
They're so good.
And, uh, look for the tent, um, and that, that tent will be the significant part of memory, it's up, up by the field, up, up, up at the top of the field. It should be a good day. We're gonna have, uh, food, lots of food, lots of food, why do they say lots of food? And it's Oktoberfest, so there's gonna be a little nourishment there too. It should be a great day. Uh, the Historic Society of Old Abington, uh, is gonna have a fall conversation at two PM at the Dyer Memorial Library. Our chairman, Mr. Kevin Donovan, along with Louise McKenzie, will be speaking that day, and it should be a very interesting talk, if I know Mr. Donovan.
And that's on the Boston Post cane, and Louise is the oldest resident in town who was presented the cane this past summer.
Unbelievable. See, the history of this town just keeps growing. And finally, uh, we would like to talk about the two thousand and four scarecrow contest. C-Owns is once again is joining Abington Celebrates Oktoberfest Weekend in hosting a scarecrow contest on October first through October twenty-eighth. Groups, organizations, classes, businesses, clubs, scout families, individuals, anyone of all ages are encouraged to enter a scarecrow, or a few, if you want to do more than one, and drop them off at C-Owns to be placed on display. C-Owns will announce the, in, in award winners on Sunday, October twenty-ninth. We encourage everyone to get involved in this. It's gonna be a great time for the citizens to get involved and drop off some scarecrows. And, uh, scarecrows can be dropped off at C-Owns at five fifty-one Bedford Street prior to October first. Appropriate props may be used, no carved pumpkins, because it's gonna be out there for a month, the squirrels will take them apart if you, if you carve them, so. Uh, we encourage everyone to join the fun, uh, and to visit C-Owns and vote. Don't forget, it's important not only to go view them, but to vote, because we're gonna pick the first three winners. I'd like to put a challenge out to all the departments in town to get their act together and get a scarecrow down there, and let's see what, what happens and how we make out. And, uh, I hope you all come out on the fourth, fifth, and sixth and enjoy our events. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, request, um, from the St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee from Jack Bailey, to permission to hold the forty-four... from Jack Bailey to permission to hold the forty-fourth Annual St. Patrick's Day on Sunday, March sixteenth at one PM for the usual route, Center of Abington down through North Abington Center. A motion by Mr. Witz to approve, is there a second? Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous.
Always a fun time.
Next item on the agenda is vote to approve the sale of $2,685,000 general obligation bond at 4.75% for, on anticipation notes dated September thirtieth, 2024, that the treasurer has put before us, the documents are incorporated and will be incorporated in the minutes as delineated and referenced thereto in this motion. Because the dates are September thirtieth, Amanda, you would need to abstain because you weren't here at the time that it was promulgated, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned at 6:52 PM. Good evening.
You went long tonight, Mr. Chairman.